Tonight, February 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., I call for order. Please join me for play religion.
I play religion.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rockwell, Land Clerk.
Supervisor Aliaga.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasurer Brown.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Almuthu.
Here.
Trustee Ritchie.
Here.
And Trustee Tatter.
Here.
We have a form.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion, your previous general is presented.
Just for.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Board and public comments, members of the board or individuals in the audience make a statement containing information of reason of coming event. Clerk Newick?
I have a couple. The townships currently has vacancies in or on the Clarkston Independence District Library Board and also the Senior Community Center Advisory Committee. Applications can be found online on our website or in the clerk's office during our normal business hours. They can be submitted by mail, email, or in person, and just for your knowledge, they're kept on file for two years. Early voting starts, this is something new. Every registered voter in the community received a postcard probably within the last few weeks regarding early voting. That is something that the law changed with proposal 22-2, and we're pleased to announce that we're going to facilitate our site here at Bay Court Park at Brady Lodge. So, early voting will start on Saturday, February 17th, for nine consecutive days. The hours will be 8:30 to 4:30, all of those days with the exception of Thursday, and the hours will be noon to 8:00 p.m. So that will conclude on February 25th. And something else that's new this year from that same law is if you were, if you have applied and received an absentee ballot, that absentee ballot can be turned in during the early voting times. You can go to the early voting centers, and this would be our center is, I'm sorry, I didn't finish explaining. It's not just Bay Court Park, but also at Waterford Oaks. Those are the two centers that registered voters in Independence and the city of the village of Clarkston can vote at. You can bring your absentee ballot there and put it into a tabulator anytime during those nine days, as well as on Election Day. That is different for the law, the law changed too, so you can take your ballot on Election Day. And lastly, speaking of elections, if you're interested in running for office, my office has candidate filing packets available. You can get those anytime the offices are open, and the filing deadline is April 23rd, which is a Tuesday by 4:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
I have one more, I'm gonna piggyback on carries, because you have a room full of young adults here. We are always searching for people to work our elections, and people can start working the polls at age 16. We do do training here, and the pay is very well for the day, and most schools will let you go with an excused absence. And I think it's a great opportunity, we've had students in the past before, so spread the word for February 27th. We need workers, as well as the primaries in August and again in November, so if you're interested, you can reach out to the clerk here.
I weren't paying attention until you said it got paid, you got paid.
Get paid and get credit, so, yes, thank you.
It's pretty good pay for the day, so, yeah.
Anyone else? No? I just wanna make a quick comment. During the last couple weeks, I spoke with several people, I saw some posts on social media, and I wanna make a point tonight. We live in a very beautiful community already. I have a seven-months baby, his name is Joseph, and I want my son to grow up in a nice community, and I think our, the very township is a very beautiful community. We are one of the, we are, I believe, no, we are in the top 20 safest townships in the state of Michigan. We're the number 17. We have a great fire department, we have a great DPW, we have great services, our charity department does a great job. What I wanna point out tonight is that we have a lot of things that we can highlight our whole community. The sense of community here, of the people that live here is awesome, it's remarkable. As an immigrant, I can, 24 years ago, I can tell you how I embrace, I love to live here in an independent township. Sometimes you may see we agree or disagree, but in the end of the day, we wanna build a better tomorrow for our township. I just wanna point out that for everyone, and thank you. Everyone would like to say something else? Okay, moving on. Public comments, anyone would like to address to our board? No? Moving on.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sir, please, state your name and address.
I'm Larry Larson, at 5863 Shore Court in Clarkston. I was wondering if, what the board could do to increase recycling in that township.
Okay, okay, thank you. All right, if you don't mind, sir, Jennifer, if you can take his information from the gentleman, I will follow up with him. If you can provide your information to Jennifer right there, please, I'll follow up with you this week. Okay? All right, anyone else? No? Okay, we don't have public hearing, and we have presentations and reports, and today actually we have the honor and privilege to have the Clarkston Everest girls volleyball team, which is the current state champion, it's truly an honor and privilege for us, and Laura, please.
Thank you. So today, as Supervisor Aliaga has said, we have the 2023 Division Four Girls Volleyball State Champion, Clarkston Everett Collegiate, Everest Collegiate, I'm sorry. This team of 13 dedicated players, a first-year head coach, two assistant coaches rallied from behind to earn their first-ever girls volleyball state championship. The tenacity displayed by these young athletes is to be commended. To the players, the coaches, and everyone, the parents, the friends, the siblings, everyone who contributed to this achievement, the Independence Township Board of Trustees extends its heartfelt congratulations. Your dedication, perseverance, and sportsmanship have been wonderful to witness. We have been following it in the papers, on social media, everywhere. And once again, congratulations on a great year and on your championship. At this time, I am going to ask Clerk Newbeck to come down, and I have some certificates for everybody. We will call you up one by one, and she will hand them off, and if we could have everybody stay up here, and I'd like to get a group picture at the end. So first, we have Samantha Petras, Addison Pierce, Sarah Bradley, Emerson File, Erica Walker, Elena Neiman, Caroline Beggs, Grace Groves, Rebecca Bernie, Emily Smith, and Madeline Kratman. Thank you all again, we are so proud of you. I'd like to give a minute to any of the board members if they would like to say anything, and then we'll get a nice group picture as well, so. Anybody wanna?
Of course, I'm gonna say something, so, we did drive out to the finals, my husband and I, and it was just tremendous to watch them come from being down two games and rallying back those three, so, we're really proud of you guys, it was a sight to see, and you put Clarkston on the map, so thank you.
Sorry. I just, I'm a Clarkston kid, graduated in 1980, played basketball, we lost one game that season, our last game, 26-1, and we came very close. And so, I get so excited to see, you know, kids doing what we couldn't quite get done, both in football, basketball, and volleyball, and a lot of other things too. It always makes me proud, and when I talk to graduates from back then, they're very proud of what everyone does, and it's not just Clarkston, it's Everest too, because we're all Clarkston kids, and so, thank you, and you make us all proud.
Oh, can, the coach can come on up?
I'm not nearly as old as Treasurer Brown, but also a Clarkston kid, not far behind him. Former teacher and coach, and it has truly been great to see progression, and then to, you know, the ultimate capstone to earn that state championship. So, as a, as a, as a school right here, an independent township, we couldn't be more proud of you, young ladies, so keep up the great work, and best of luck in the future.
So if we don't mind, do we, do we need to go at recess to take a picture, or how do you wanna do this, clerk?
No, you can do it.
Does the board wanna stand up so they're in as well?
We're not tall enough to.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, all right, good. All right. Now we have presentation by Treasurer Paul Brown.
You girls are free to go. I really don't think you wanna listen to the rest of us, so, congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you for coming, thank you, thank you.
Okay, so I am presenting the Townships Investment Report. For folks who haven't seen this before, it's a requirement under the state law that quarterly investment reports are presented to the board, and I think we've come a long way in the years to try and be more transparent and give the board more ability to understand what's going on and to see detail of what investments are. Something that occurred to me as I prepared the last investment report was that we see this number on our investment report of 40, $50 million, and, and people are saying, "We have $50 million?" And so I thought, maybe I should try to break that out, just a little short piece before I bring up the investment report. And, and so, what you've got in front of me is something I threw together today, I'll expand it a bit so it's a little easier to see. And as I said, we have $50 million, right? It's, so, this information here came directly from our financial statements for 2022. 2023 is not done yet, our numbers are gonna be very similar to these, but I wanted to help, I think this will help the board and the public understand a little bit better what we have and what it's for, and then how I go about investing it, okay? So, of the $57 billion that was on our balance sheet at the end of 2022, it's broken down here, so I've got almost $6 million in our water fund, $9.5 million in our sewer fund. Those are operated like a business, so the only people that participate in these funds are people who are actually on the system. Taxpayers who do not have water and sewer but have septic systems and wells, they never charge for water and sewer, and, and so this money is treated like a separate business, and our, and our water and sewer director manages like a business and charges for the services. So those monies are restricted, we can't use them for anything but water and anything but sewer, and those have to be separated as well. So water money can't be used for sewer, and sewer can't be used for water. Stepping down the general fund, I've got a breakdown of that that I'll show when I get to the bottom. At this point in time, we had, you know, a little over $8 million in the police fund, $8 million in the fire fund. Those are dedicated millages, they have to be used for those purposes and can't be used for anything else. Safety paths, we collect a millage for safety paths, what will often happen is we'll, we'll grow that amount of money until we've got enough to do projects, and then the safety path committee brings forward recommendations to the township, and we then take on those projects and continue to expand the safety path around the township. We have road millage money. In this case, we came in under budget when we had the road millage, and this money is, it's identified for that, we can't use it for anything else, and I think the board at some point here is gonna have conversations about what we're going to do with that in the near future. Fire capital projects, the township does a really good job of saving their money for things they need to buy versus going out and borrowing money for it. I think that's a super important thing, so we will, the fire has their own capital project, capital project money, and this is if we're gonna buy a new fire engine. They actually go out multiple decades as to when we're going to need to replace the various equipment that they have. So that's what that money there is for. Capital projects, this can be capital projects for other departments, not fire. There's special assessment money here, there's been money that's been collected from residents, and it's dedicated to specific, to specific special assessments, and township helps get those projects done. There's money for cable TV, again, that's, that's, can only be used for that. Improvement revolving, this is related to special assessments, and Sashaba Drain Maintenance, $111,000. So that's the 50. When I look at the general fund, there's some components about that. There's about $623,000 at the end of 2022 that was for the cemetery. That money is partly used for operations, and the rest, we're trying to create a perpetual fund so that the cemetery can always be taken care of. Interest rates where there are, are helping us a lot, but right now, it's, that's not really perpetual. I think the last study I saw had us running out in 110 years or something like that. I prefer that it actually is perpetual, and we're still working to make something like that happen. Down below, with the rest of the general fund, on the financial statement, you'll see a category called "assigned." Really what that means is, it's an unofficial placeholder for ideas. These would require board approval to spend, so, these are just things that, for example, park acquisition, that $2 million was put out as an assignment of something we might wanna do. I think it's been like six years ago when we tried to buy the property on Clarkston Road. That still sits there. $2 million for possible renovations to town hall and expanding that. There's a million for a road, possible road project. The 1.5 million was for improvements to the sheriff substation. That's actually, I think that's, is that underway yet, or no? Not yet, okay. There's escrow money as part of that, that is building escrows that we've collected from developers and folks who have put escrows in. Subsequent budget, and then there's a couple million dollars that's unassigned, and then the, the difference between the total at the top and the bottom. There are receivables and liabilities and deferred items that then make those balance. So my intent of showing this was just to say that while it appears we have this giant bucket of money, it's very specific about what it's for and how it can be used. So, I'm gonna then lead into my, my investment report, and I've actually done a couple things because I see this as a chance to sort of look at last year and how we did, but also compare to where we were, if I go back 18 months, when, you know, sort of the inflation started really kicking in and interest rates started going up. So to do that, what I've done is I brought forward the third quarter investment report. Let's see if I can put this up here. I think I'm missing a little bit here. I think I'm off the edge. Oh, here we go, I can see it over here. There we go. Okay. So maybe I'll try to stack these a little bit. I only wanna show the charts and compare them, be patient with me, I know I should've come down and tested this earlier. All right, so, we'll start over here on the left, investment type, and then down here, this is from the third quarter of 2022. I had, I was, I was out of office between 19 and 2022 for three years, came back in, and, and so, when I came in, what we'll see here is this gray down here, this is money invested in the county's investment pool. So we had almost 50% of our money sitting with the county, who has a pool where they invest in the same kinds of things that we invest in. The, the big difference is, their rate of return was significantly less than what I think we would get out there in the marketplace for a lot of reasons, but I'm not gonna go into what they do. The other issue is, if you look here at the maturity distribution 18 months ago, we had 60-plus percent of our money had a one-day maturity. All the money at the county is considered a one-day maturity, so your interest rate's not gonna be great on a one-day maturity compared to one that's 30, 60, 90 days out. Okay? The other, and so I, I wanted to do two things, we talked about it back then, it was to change this, where, where the gray now, I have a very small amount of the county, this orange is federal agencies, so treasuries, mortgage-backed securities, the safest investment in the world, and with interest rates where they've gone, that just made sense to be there. They're so strong, and it really helps the township, and if you look at the, the breakdown of, let's see if I can close this. I need new glasses, everything. Let's drag it over here. So now if you look at my maturity distribution, instead of that giant blue number of one day, now you'll see that one of the things I try to do is ladder things out over the course of, you know, 12 months so that I've got excellent buckets of the money continuing to re, to mature as we go every single month, something else is maturing. So we've accomplished that, and, so now I'm gonna we'll stay with this, but I'm gonna try to close that if I can see it. There we go. Still a bit big, we'll just do that, all right. So now we'll kinda get into the heart of it here. I have a little summary at the top which I'll read. "The Federal Reserve has held rates steady during the fourth quarter. Expectations are for rate reductions during 2024. We have begun a measured approach to place investments further out to take advantage of rates while anticipating a rate reduction. Our average weighted yield has ticked up slightly. Further increases will be tempered until low-yield mature, until low-yield holdings mature. The unrealized losses as of 12/31/23 have reduced to a little over half a million dollars. For comparison, the, the unrealized gain or loss in 2019 was a gain of about $60,000. And the impact of the fact that we invest in maturity, we invest in treasuries that have a fixed interest rate is that as soon as the Federal Reserve raises interest rates, the market value of that holding goes down. It always will. If you hold it to maturity, you always get back the investment, and the number-one rule for the treasurer's office is to protect the principal. So, as long as we know we've structured things so we have enough money to properly operate, we're never in a position where we have to sell something that has a loss, and we will look at those investments shortly, and you'll see where there's quite a few that have large losses, and those are all tied to things that have low interest rates from two or three years ago and got put out at three, three years. And so, those losses will disappear as it matures, and, and we know this for a fact as long as we don't sell it."
Let me ask you a quick question on your maturity distribution chart. You have, it shows 35% in 90 days.
Yep.
Can you explain what that is?
So this, this, the maturity distribution is all based on the date that the investments are gonna mature. So when we go to the holding sheet, you'll see it sorted by maturity date, and, and I literally can go, here's all the ones that are gonna mature within 90 days. You start with the ones that are within one day, the next bucket is 90 days, and it's just a total of those, the value of those holdings.
So what's your thoughts on having the 90 days versus one year or more that may have better interest rates, is I guess what I was getting at?
So.
Are you looking at those?
So what you have to understand is that the 90 days is as of 12/31. A number of those investments were bought a year ago, but they only got 90 days left till they mature.
Okay, thank you.
Right? So I didn't buy them at 90 days for the most part, sometimes I do, but these are things that might have been bought two years ago, and now there's 90 days left till they mature.
Okay.
So that's a constantly evolving distribution, maturity distribution, of what's maturing, and then additional things I'm adding into the investments.
Thank you.
Okay, so, now what we're seeing here is where we were with a pretty significant loss, unreal, again, unrealized losses, and again, you know, the county has this exact same problem but on a much greater scale, because they were doing, putting things out too, and of course, the interest And of course, the interest rates, you know, went up and so these holdings became worth a lot less. We've been very fortunate that we've not had to sell anything and so we haven't had to recognize any losses and I don't anticipate that. We are now down here to this in December, it was down to 557,000 in unrealized losses. And the the budgeted interest income for 2023 was 150,000. And I had them adjust that up to 400,000 early in the year. And I met with Rick today and reviewed it. I've I've beat that projection by 1.3 million. So we've we've made 1.7 million in interest income this year. And at first I was like, I was like, what? But when you think about it, if I've got, you know, 40, really 40 million is what's in I'm investing because 13 million is in cash. We're making 2% interest on that just sitting in the checking account and and that moves up and down. But the I'm earning on an average right now since November of 2022, 4.98% interest. That's the return on everything we've invested in at that point. And if you multiply that times, you know, $40 million, that's $2 million. So the numbers are, the number's correct and then Rick can confirm that for us. Now that money gets spread out about each department, right? The fire department gets a quarter of a million dollars of interest. Departments with smaller fund balances, they get a smaller piece of that. It's prorated and allocated each department based on their fund balances. That's how that interest is shared out. So it gets utilized to improve each of those departments based on the monies that they help. We'll jump to the holdings report. And I know this thing is still kind of small. Let's see if I can get this thing out of here. It's a little bigger. And so for those that haven't seen this, this was a change to our investment policy. And and what we did was we modified it to say that the treasurer has to bring an actual list of every single investment that's held. We didn't use to do that, but I think from a transparency standpoint, it really makes it the responsibility of the treasurer to be prepared to show this and explain it to people. And so that's why we now include this in the packet. These are investments and then I'm going to scroll over a bit and make this bigger so we can look at the losses. All right, so here I've got a maturity, here's a purchase date and a maturity date. And so when I scroll down, you see most of the things that are maturing right now are either some gains or, you know, losses that aren't super significant. When I get down here, you start seeing big numbers where this is where we're showing unrealized losses. And in most cases, these are things that were bought between 2021, 20 and 2022 that were, for example, here's one with $160,000 loss, it's a half percent interest. That was the interest rate you got in March of 2021. And now we put it out at, you know, at a at three years, a three year term. I think that's a little long for my taste, knowing that interest rates were going to go up, but that's where we're at. And and I can't do much about that because I have to let it mature. I don't want to recognize the loss. In the balance, these items up here were, you know, I've got something here I bought in February of last year that has an $84,000 gain on it right now. And I went through a process and looked at, well, does it make sense to sell it and take the gain? I did the math on this and if I take that and take the gain and then reinvest it at the current rate, it comes out the same. Like you can't try and game the system because the system knows what the rates are and these things have a specific value, the marketplace determines it. And so for us, the most important thing is to make sure this money is safe and then really secure investments and that I've got it laddered out so we're never forced to sell anything. Interest rates are high. Is it making me look good? Probably, but everyone who's investing is making good interest right now and hopefully the township will benefit from that. This is a little different than prior review, presentation of the investment report and that's kind of all I'm going to put on and any questions from the board or the public that I can try to answer.
Any question from board members? Anyone from the public?
Jim. Jim's on my investment advisory committee. So we have an investment advisory committee and I got some really, really smart people on that, including Jim. And so they go through this and I review this report with them. I've got people who are brokers. I've got someone whose whose career was he managed a 1.5 billion dollar portfolio for an insurance company. I mean, I've got really a great team and we're looking at some interesting ideas. And so I, it's great support for me, Jim. He's part of that committee.
Yeah, I just participated in my first meeting a couple weeks ago, learned a lot. And one of the things that stuck out with me, you think in a, an environment that we have to, we have to be conservative in our investments as a steward of taxpayer dollars. But what I found particularly interesting, one would think in this, you know, in the marketplace of higher interest rates, that pretty much most, most banks are going to be offering similar returns. But what you've identified, maybe can explain a little bit, you've identified other products were stepping away as they mature from certain, certain vendors, for lack of better words, and placing them with with other banks and other institutions which are going to actually yield us a greater return even though we're in a somewhat of a conservative marketplace.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up and I and I will share that. So when I, when I go to buy something and I say, I need to get something, I need, I need to do a million or $2 million and I need it to mature in June. Because I'll look at the ladder and go, oh, I have a spot in June where I don't have any maturity. So I get quotes from one of our broker, security brokers, right? He sends me a ton of quotes. And I'll take that sheet, look for something that fits, and then I request a quote from two other brokers that are part of the township and I look for the low bid. And I I've had as much as a $6,000 variance on a $2 million investment because they quote it and they make money, especially in the used market. If it's a new issue, so if the treasury issues a new T bill, they're all the same price. They all have the exact same price because it's new. On the used market, they can set their prices. And I and I have a new broker that I've brought in and right now I use Comerica, JP Mortgage Securities and Fifth Third, okay? Fifth Third was a new one. Fifth Third was a low bid on something, right? So my goal is to have these guys fighting with each other to get our business because it's an extra few thousand dollars on every investment. And so we always, I always send them out to bid whatever I'm going to buy. I can take the Q sit number, which identifies the security, and I email them and say, can you quote this for me for a million or $2 million? I send it to each group of them. The low, the low, the low number wins. And when that happens, the township wins, so. Any other questions? Joe?
More of a comment than a question. What I liked about the new investment policy was that, you know, it takes cash to run the township. Yeah, but when you have it all invested, you have to sell some of those investments when you need the cash. But the way you've got it structured is you don't have to sell anything that we're going to take a loss at. And you just wait for it to, you know, to break even. So that's something new and different that's come up. I think Jim is, I got on, you know, maybe six months before you got on that, but that's the one thing I learned, that we're not forced to take any losses in anything because of that the way you structure it. So that's a good deal for us.
That's, Joe's on the investment advisory committee also. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. Any other?
So that's general operating funds. What if there's a disaster or something that there's an extra expense that wasn't really anticipated? Is there a rainy day fund or might in that case we might have to sell something?
Well, if I had to, yeah, yeah, I, so I said it. So there's a couple of things to look at. If there's a disaster, let's say you know, town hall got destroyed, we have insurance. Our insurance company is going to pay for that. If I had to sell things right now, I have probably seven or eight million that has gains. I could sell it. I certainly wouldn't sell the ones that are going to generate the losses. But I, you know, if if that came up, I could certainly come up with that money. I think I have within, within 120 days, I always have seven or eight million maturing within that period, including every single month. So it's a good question. In most cases, we're going to be able to cover that without taking losses. Okay. Any other questions? All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also going to suggest we get a small monitor on this podium somehow because it's not easy to try to adjust this up here when you can't see it in front of you. Just a thought.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
No excuses for getting old.
All right, we don't have any to carry over, so we go to the consent agenda. Number one.
Congratulations.
Request, excuse me, please, please, please. Moving on.
I'd like to amend the consent agenda if possible.
You want to amend the consent agenda?
I just want to pull out the out of state travel so he can explain to us, you know, what that's about.
The consent agenda, which I don't know.
Number three. Number three.
Number three, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Is about, is about Brian.
It's the travel, the conference. Yeah, last time we had one of these, the director explained us what, you know, what they were going to do there, the benefits of it, you know, what was going on. It wasn't, I don't think it was in a consent agenda last time when we did it, it was an agenda item.
So you want to move it to the business agenda to discuss?
Please.
Someone is going to support that?
I'll support it.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you pause? All right, no problem. Going to move it to business? We can put it in there. All right?
Just discuss that items are moved from consent agenda.
Right.
Which is K after the, after you do the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, now we're going to do the consent agenda. All right. No, consent agenda. Okay, number one, request to approve the board of trustees, regular closed session meeting, minutes of January 23rd, 2024. Two, request to approve the January 30th, 2024 check run including ACH, $721,072.80 and ratified the January 19th, 2024 payroll, $391,754.12 and October and November 2023 EFT, activity of $512,497.71 and $635,304.10. And number four, because we already moved number three, number four, request to approve Bradlodge rental with alcohol, May 4th, 2024, Christopher Barber. Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Okay, all those, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And you pause? Okay, motion carried. All right, business, we go to regular business.
No, item K.
Oh, item K, right? Okay, oh, yes, yes, yes. All right, Sam. Hold on, sorry. Okay, move out of state. So this is something that I do, I do, if we do it actually every year. So I mean, it's a capacitation to support our employees. We do across the board with every employee, person rec.
I think Brian's in the, he was on the screen.
Brian is, okay. Hi, Brian.
Just to give us some background.
Sure, sure. Brian, can you explain a little bit about this?
Sure. Yeah, we've been doing this since I have personally and fire department's actually been going longer than I have, but we've been doing this since 2017. GIS is a huge focal point of our operations, both in the planning department and also in other departments. Last year, it wasn't consent agenda, but I did a presentation as well just to give newer board members a flavor of what we've done to date. You know, we've, we've done close to 30 applications for departments, for the public. Some are internal facing applications that that are used by departments and their workflows in elections, assessing, et cetera. So, you know, we go to this conference, it's the largest GIS conference, which is geographic information systems. It's the largest conference in the world in San Diego and there's 18,000 people that attend this conference. You know, we, since that, the conference, we've developed newer applications and stay up on the trends of of new updates that have to be done because of expiring HTML technology and other things that get pretty technical in the metadata of the software. So, you know, this is a conference that we get free registration through our licensing packages and, you know, we've, the the latest, you know, some of the success of these applications, the elections, polling places application gets about 1,000 people hit that the day before and the day of elections, before elections. And also our master plan website has generated almost 4,000 views and our survey developed through GIS, it actually is, we've gotten 450 responses to to date, which is a pretty high number for a survey. Typically, we don't get that when we do a master plan update. So, you know, these are, that, that actual website's been recognized by ESRI, the software company that develops GIS as a model for other communities to use nationwide. So that's, that's been a pretty high achievement for us. There's also other things that are coming down the pike. We've combined our parcel viewer. We actually had seven different applications and we've combined them all into one. So it's a one stop shop so people can look up parcels and get all the pertinent information for land use, floodplain information, as well as parcel size, all using specialized code that we do in what's called an instant app, which means the apps are developed for your your laptop in front of you or your cell phone. They're all interactive to know what device you're using, which is a huge improvement to our offerings. And this year, we're, we're, the next step in this is to develop 3D and use 3D technology to be able to see our parcels in 3D as well as what they are now, which is the new aerial from 2023 in in 2D technology. So we also developed this year, we took all the election results going back to 2016 and and posted those in a, what's called a portfolio. So they're all combined into one site now. So, you know, we, we started GIS a long time ago in the township, back in '06 is really when we started this. And and every year, we're trying to revolutionize and modernize our software and our offerings to the township because this is about transparency in this township. And that was started by Supervisor Kittle and we've continued that forward to date. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I provided part of our, the presentation I did last year, I provided that in the packet for board members to review.
I think I just follow up very shortly too. Brian's been working on an early voting site app as well. And we've been talking about that just this week and voters will be able to log into there and it'll also give you the closest location for you to vote at for an early voting site between the two and then also the closest drop box to take your absentee ballot with photos. The other election website as well, you put in your address and it's going to bring up your specific ballot style, your, your picture of your location, actually going to give you a map to get to your location if you're unaware. your, your picture of your location, actually going to give you a map to get to your location if you're unaware. So I, I think it's super user-friendly, and now that it's been more adaptive for phones and things like that, rather just than a laptop and a desktop, I think it's, it's, we've made great strides. So excited that we've got even more coming and making it more available, because information, as we know, the more information we have, the better citizens we can be. So I appreciate you, Brian, and the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Brian, how many other departments are you doing GIS for?
Right now, we have, Fire Department uses it as well as DPW.
Are you doing the programming for it, or do they have someone else that helps, works with you on it?
Uh, no, I, I do all the development work for what's in Town Hall. DPW has their own consulting firm that helps them, and Fire Department has done in-house as well at the Fire Department.
Okay. Okay. We're good?
Sure.
All right. Okay, any other questions from the Trustee Committee?
There's a comment from me, I guess, is in the packet there, you know, there's some slides that Brian's put in along with this. You know, and I think he mentioned this in his conversation here, but it shows some of the applications and some of the uses of the GIS.
Yeah. Yes, Thresha Brown.
Just, just one quick thing that I always thought was very interesting. The Water and Sewer Department, if they have employees, and correct me if I'm wrong, if they have employees out in the field and come across a problem, let's say at a manhole, they can ping it on their phone, and it immediately will feed it back into the, into the township system because of the GIS coding, and it will identify it as something that could need a work order or something of that nature. Is that, he's shaking his head yes. So some really great tools are, come out of this thing for the employees to be more productive in all departments.
Right, and something else is that this is already budget expenditure for the Department of Planning and Zoning, so it doesn't require a budget amendment. It's already there. All right. We're good? Anyone else? Okay, I need a, a motion to approve this.
Make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for Brian Ottman, Planning and Zoning Director, to attend the two thousand and twenty-four Esri User Conference in San Diego, California, from July fifteenth through July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to the terms and conditions specified under Section three twelve, expense reimbursement, petty cash payroll accounts payable of the Charter Township of Independence Employee Policy and Procedure Manual.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
We're good? Okay. Moving on, regular business. Okay, now we have a presentation about the logo. And before we start, if you know, we, for many years, I mean, more than twenty years, we were trying to figure out a logo, because we have like seven, six, seven logos, and finally, I mean, this is kind of historic moment, we accomplished something. Something important for a township, we're going to present our logo to the board. I mean, you guys can come from the podium, please. They are from the marketing company that has been working with us, and that's a special committee about this new logo for the township.
Can you see it, okay?
That looks, okay? Oh, no, that's not. That's not Sam.
It looks like your current logo.
Would that be helpful for anyone?
Yeah, yeah, that will help, please. Yeah, if you don't mind. That will really help.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if, are you, everybody has, I know we know some of y'all. My name is Al. Kylie, we are from Q and M. We've been working with seven folks from the township for.
Seven months now?
Seven months, it's been, it's been a long time. And so, so what we have up on the screen right now, you can see the current logo, and what I wanted to do, can I go down one? Can I go down one? I can't see, I can't see that far. Told you.
The monitor.
I definitely need glasses and refuse to accept it. So I, I think the big question we always want to start with is why update the brand? And we'll get to the new logo really quick here. This is the fun part of the evening, I think. So the big question is why? The, the current logo, as you mentioned, we have a lot of departments using a lot of different presentations, so that is just technically difficult for everybody to get on the same page. Also, the current logo was developed some time ago, before we had a lot of mediums that we currently have. There are just objective, technical aspects to the script that's used, that becomes illegible when it's in very small formats, the texture of the bell image behind it. So when we take all the, the subjective aesthetic preferences out of it, there's just simply some technical reasons why a logo update is necessary at this point. It's going to be faster and more consistent for all the different departments to use. We can execute it across many different departments easily. Everybody can have updated files. I think there were some of the current logos being used that were only, only even in existence in print form and had to be sort of scanned in and re-executed a lot. So we, as we go on to item number two here, branding a township is, and coming up with a logo township is always going to be a challenge. We have, even on a group of seven people, which is obviously a small sample of your total township population, even in that group of seven, there are going to be vastly different tastes and aesthetic preferences. And so our job as a professional branding firm is to come in and help that process along and make it as objective as possible. So I have some things that I need as your designer, I'm not actually the designer, but our designers need, when we go out to use this on a website, or you put it on a t-shirt, or put it on a van, or a water tower, or a department logo, there's technical things that need to be present, and that's our job to make sure those are there. And then, it's to walk everyone through the aesthetic process and try to get as much of everyone's preferences involved as possible. So this is a detailed and collaborative process. I have a little bit of details on that on the next page. I pulled some numbers from the process. There were over three hundred hours of our time put in on this. That does not include the probably almost as many hours of the committee's time that they put in reviewing and, and coming together on things and compromising on things. It is a collaborative, detailed process. And what we're doing there is making sure that when we get to this point, we can confidently say, like, yeah, we explored ten fully unique concepts and broke them all down and walked down every road we could think of. And everybody in the committee worked super hard to take time to review and make sure their input was heard. We had six full rounds of revision. That's about twice the standard. And, and we did that because we want to make sure we end up in a, in a spot that, that's, you know, it's a bit like threading the needle. We have, we have some things that we want to make sure we keep. We want to make sure we kept the bell involved. The bell is on our flag. We have a bell here on the podium. There are bells everywhere. So abandoning that isn't an option, and we want to make sure that that stays in there and as well as bring in some of the things that the township now stands for. We want to make sure that we experience everything in the township within this brand and that we give folks a chance to, to use it. This is sort of a sneak preview night, because it's not officially rolled out yet, but. The next page. We also sort of centered on this experience everything concept. As Independence Township, as we met folks and heard long, detailed explanations from everyone about why they're here, what stuck out was that everyone had pretty different reasons why they were here. There was, there was overlap, especially about family and community. But then, everyone had their own very important reasons to be here. And this idea that you have so much of the benefits of being in a rural community, but also you're not giving up the benefits of being in a city to get them, and it's a nice balanced experience of everything. There is a, you know, you have world touring music acts coming through right here in the township, but you also can, you know, be out on a lake, on a fishing boat. I don't know, can I walk there from here? Pretty close. Although I don't know how I'd get the boat there. Not that soon. So I think on the next page, we have the actual execution that we came up with.
Can we read this? Can you read this?
Uh, yeah, I, I, not on that screen, but I have it up here. Can't read that here. Yeah, so I was summarizing the full text of Independent Township. Independence Township features most everything folks want, unique dining, rural outdoor activities, and world touring live music. Residents, visitors, and commuters alike enjoy the stability of a small town without sacrificing the education, technology, and services of the township. The experiences over time create a picture of a full life of family, friends, success, and support of a community. That last one, support of a community, is the one thing we heard from everyone we talked to. That was in everybody's explanation of why they were here. I mean, that's what we ask when we come into a town. Why are you here? Why, why are you here right now? And that support of the community was, come up, came up over and over and over again, so. And here you have it. Yeah, so this is, it is legible in many sizes. It includes the, our bell. It includes a lot of the elements that everyone talked about. It meets all my technical needs. Aesthetically, that is up to you. I have no, no comments or notes on, on your aesthetic presence. I mean, it meets all our design needs. It executes across, we can kind of skip through some more so you can see more executions. This is where my, my objective needs are met. It includes enough elements that it can be shaped and changed and executed across digital and physical t-shirts, embroidery, vans, water towers. I think we have some department lockups, so every department can use it in its own. The bell image can stand alone if it needs to. It has the many different elements that we can pull apart and use in different contexts. It updates the look to a point where it, the township's brand and presence will fit in with township and city peers in the area as they all update their brands, and, and we're not going to be sort of left behind and outdated. And it should live on in the future. This, this, I'm not going to say it's future-proof, but it will last into the future without looking out of date. We haven't taken any drastic trend leaps that will disappear in a couple of years. This should be fairly classic. And, and again, work in many mediums, it works digitally, especially if we, we want it to be shapeable, square, round, rectangle, so that when we go into digital mediums, the logo still works no matter where we're using it. But yeah, that's, we can open it up to questions and comments, I guess. I don't know if I do that, or.
Sure, of course. Any questions, comments? Trustee Lamato.
Yeah, one quick one I noticed. When you go from the straight, you have the experience everything, but then when you do the circle version, you take that tagline out. Is there a reason?
Just to show you different versions, yeah, just to show you different executions. You can use it in either one.
I think some of us were looking for that tagline that we've been missing, so I, I personally would like to see that tagline on every version.
And typically, you know, what we'll provide is that full style, guys, you'll see all the different uses. We're going to want to include that after talking with everybody. We're going to want to include that tagline as it does represent, you know, what you're seeing here. But there will be instances where we just want that option. It might be a little small, you know, when some of the text gets to a certain size layout. We just have some options for that, but, but, yeah, but we do like to include it, whatever.
We refer to it as lockups, so this is the same logo in a lot of different lockups. And so sometimes you can, you can use the experience everything on everything, or it works without it as well if you get to a space that it's not going to fit, or a context where it's not applicable.
Okay. Thank you.
But yes, you absolutely can put it everywhere if you'd like to.
Yeah. And if you see, I mean, the bell is part of our history. The bell have to be a part of the logo. And if you see that, some people says, what is that? Is it a mountain, or what's that? That's a pineapple. So as you know, when we were making this research, a lot of people always, where do you live from? Some people says, I live in Pineup. So I said, okay, Pineup somehow have to be there, that's why we include the bell, we include in Pineup. Yeah, so, right there.
I think we have some.
Oh, maybe more. So it's Pineup there, it's the bell, which is part of our identity.
Up at the top, where it says a hundred percent, you can click on that and make it bigger.
Okay. And as you see, for, for many years, we, each department have a logo, or we have many logos, and part of the lack of sometimes understanding, so, so many people believe they're still living in, in Clarkston when they're living in Independence Township, and this is going to help us a lot, and it's going to be one single logo across the board for all the departments. And I, particularly, I like it. I think it's a very good, nice logo. Anyone, anybody else would like to, just Thresha Brown?
It was funny, we went into this, and it's weird going into a process where you're a hundred percent guaranteed at the end, someone's not going to like what you come up with. So we, you know, it was an interesting process, and, and I like it.
Anyone else? Trustee Morocco?
I think the bell's nice. It kind of gives that homey, country, pineapple thing. I don't particularly care for the Oakland County part being on it. I think that's irrelevant to our brand. Nobody, you know, we, people know what county we're in. We're not branding ourselves to be outside of the township. So to me, if you're going to go with the experience everything, that should, that should be the focal point. I look at this and think Oakland County, Michigan, established eighteen thirty-seven. But that's not what you're trying to say. You're trying to say Independence Township was established in eighteen thirty-seven, and we're in Oakland Township, or Oakland County, Michigan. So I guess if the brand is to, to go global, it makes sense to, to geographically identify where we are in the state, that we're even in Michigan at all, let alone what county we're in. But to me, I, I, that's the only thing that I'm not really, I don't understand why that's part of the, I know it was part of our old logo, but to me, if we're branding inside the boundaries of our township, that's taking up valuable text space and telling data that's really not necessary to, to the wow factor of where, you know, the township, where you experience everything. You know, I think that takes away from it, especially when you see the picture on the pickup truck. It's somewhat confusing because you're, you know, because if you're from here, Oakland County's Oakland County, then there's Oakland Township, then there's Independence Township, and you're, you're putting more than one location or one identity in our logo opposed to just the logo of our township. So that's, you know, every experience everything, I think that's as, as good as anything you could come up with, you know? And, and the Music Theater and the Ski Hill, the pine trees of the Music Theater, the Ski Home, you know, I'm sure you captured those things that are dear to the people that are from here long-term. But I think that the Oakland County, Michigan, established eighteen thirty-seven, either the, you know, could be, I just think that's, that's more information that's needed if you're, you know, personally. But overall, I like the concept of the bell and everything. I just don't think that's necessary to be part of our logo.
Yeah.
In the local arena that it's being used at, you know, everyone knows where, where we're at if you see our logo when driving around town, that we're in Michigan and Oakland County.
Ye- yes, sir, but.
But that's just my opinion.
Yes, Carrie.
I think just a follow-up to what Trustee Morocco said. Our vehicles do travel outside of the county, and, you know, they go Lansing, make trips to Lansing and things like that, and there is another independence within Michigan. So this helps to set us apart. I also think it's part of an ode to the old logo. I think that was part of what we were also thinking, and this is a sensitive thing, making this kind of a change. There's residents that were part, that are still here, that were part of the original logo, and I think it's part of our past, and it's helping us forge us into the future while keeping still part of our past. With it being smaller, you know, I think when you look at it, the green of the bell and the green of the township and the size of it. and the green of the township and the size of it is what stands out. And personally, I think it's neat to see it in print, especially our establishment, not so much, of course, the Oakland County, but I'm very proud of it. I think the other six members that worked on the committee, Supervisor Aliaga, Treasure Brown, Lisa Christensen from Parks and Rec, Laura, John Elke, who is not here, Jennifer Spiegel, and am I forgetting one person? That's all of them. I think there was a lot that did go into it, and I hope that for the most part, as Treasure Brown said, we will not make everyone happy, but I do think this is something to be proud of and to move us into the future, and I was very excited for this evening and for it to be brought forward. So, thank you, Q and M, for all of your patience with us and the many revisions that it had to take, and...
Yeah. Something that I want to, before I open to the public, is that if, if this gets approved tonight, there's something that we, a lot of departments were waiting, we, for instance, our parks, when, when talk office, I have the parks, we don't have, why we don't have the, why we don't have the nice signs in our parks, like Sacha of Plains and so forth? And they were saying that we are waiting for the law. So, when I, even about our website, we didn't update a lot of things because of the logo. So, we budgeted already some updates for our parks and so forth, but the reason we moved forward is because of the law. And this law has been postponed for many, many years, so it's going to be important, not just for our parks and rec, but also for, for DVA, because Dixie Highway for a long time don't have a sign that says, welcome to the township, or thanks for visiting our township. So it's Sacha Road, so a lot of the, other townships like Wada for Oreo and so forth, they do have that. So it's going to change a lot in the positive things for the township as well. Besides, currently, right now, we have like six, five, six logos right now. Each department has their own logo, and then, you know? All right, before I open to the public, anyone else? Okay, we're going to watch the video?
Yeah, I believe John from the team had, had put this together just to kind of show it in context.
Okay, there's the video?
Independence Township features the everything folks want, from unique dining to rural outdoor activities and world touring live music. Residents, visitors, and commuters alike enjoy the stability of a small town without sacrificing the education, technology, and services of the township. The experiences over time create a picture of a life full of family, friends, success, and support of a community. Experience everything in Independence Township.
Very nice, very nice, very nice. That's John Elke. All right.
And, and thanks again to the, all the folks on the committee. Again, it was, it's, it's hard. We've had, we've had folks leave not friends anymore from these processes. Hopefully, everybody was able to come to some sort of middle point on everything, yeah.
Sure. I would like to open to the public if someone would like to... Sure, can you come up front, please, and state your name and address?
Steve Thornhill, 5641 Nob Hill Circle. I was just curious what the actual color of the logo, new logo is, because it was represented differently on three of these screens. I'm, I'm thinking the green one was the correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's all I really wanted to know.
Sure, thank you. Sure, no problem. Okay, anyone else? Please come on to the podium and state your name and address.
David Hayward, 6764 Berwick Drive. I just had a quick question about why they decided to drop the, the top portion of the bell? Because I guess to me, it doesn't make sense, I mean, I've lived here my whole life, but without this top part here, the bell doesn't seem to make sense for the township, so I just didn't understand that it kind of looks like the old Michigan bell bell, but I don't know what the determination was for losing the top part of the bell. But I like the rest of it, obviously. The inside looks very nice, so.
Did you write it down here? We had a lot of executions with the, in fact, we found out what that's actually, there's a specific name for that. That's now, I'm now forgetting, but yeah, we did experiment a lot of executions with the belly hanger bit still on there. I, you know, honestly, there was a lot of different reasons across the committee why we eventually moved away from it. Some of them, from, from our end at least, and in the, in our design team, were that it was really hard to create a logo out of it that didn't just say Taco Bell was a big piece of it. There was a lot of Taco Bell. I don't know, but there were different reasons across the entire committee as to why the decision was made. You know, everybody had their own reason for preferring the more simple bell execution. You know, I, again, on, on our end, we're really looking for those objective reasons why, because the subjective is never going to have a consensus, so, so objectively, it does make a very complex logo even more complex, and that causes difficulty in our reshaping and resizing often. But then aside from that, it was just a number of different preferences that overlap.
Okay, please, come to the podium, state your name and address.
Joette Coons, 974 O'Ree's Road. I just have a question about 1837. Where, I mean, where did you get that date?
I made it up, yes.
Well, I mean, Michigan became state that year.
No, 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 no.
But 1834 appears to be, the township was originated. 1832 was the village. So I guess, I just, I just wondered where that date come from.
Sure, Carrie, would you like...
Township planner got that from the state historical archives. It was actually the first, I believe, the first board meeting met in April of 37. And that's where we got it from. There was some talk back and forth because there was some disagreements on dates, and we have different dates on different flags, and we got that from the state archives.
Good question. Yeah, right, right. Good question. Anyone online that would like to, address to the board? Okay. All right, any, somebody would like to make the motion, or...
Let's get one comment before we make a motion.
Of course.
I guess I object to the motion, the way it's written. Because in my mind, we're not approving any expenses to implement the logo that each department, if they're going to spend money, we go through the, the normal process of, creating a may for whatever it's taken. Like, I know a number of different places already have it in their budget to, to change signs or whatever, but, but to me, we're not approving, I don't know how you can approve the expenditure without any data behind it to approve, so. Seems like, like whatever you're going to do, we just go through the normal purchasing or, you know, may process.
I guess it would be those that would follow, that would follow underneath those guidelines, I guess, under the...
Well, I just don't want to be in a confusion that we're, it says we're approving the implementation of the new logo in, in facilities, fixtures, and goods, so.
Treasure Brown?
So, my understanding is that we have to go out to sign companies to move to the next step in many cases, and so that's going to involve going out to bid, getting quotes from the sign companies, and that's going to come back before the board in some fashion with design work on exactly how the sign's laid out, and, and so I see this, I see a lot of these coming back to the board for sure, because there's going to be, we're going to have to approve contracts with people that quote it to do the work, so.
Like I said, I'm, I'm not saying, I think the motion to approve the logo is fine, but I think any, any mention of approving the related expenses is, is totally not needed because it should be handled through a normal financial process, so.
I agree.
And, and like I said, I'm not against implementing it or, or, you know, spending money, but I just, to me, by the way it's worded, it's like we're approving something that we don't know. It could be $10 million, and everybody's going to go, whoops, I didn't think it was going to be that much, so.
All right, so... Should be able to just jump from presented to and implemented, and miss those words in the middle.
So yeah, we can approve just the logo?
So I'll make a motion to accept the new Independence Township logo as presented, and to adopt and implement the new logo onto township property, facilities, fixtures, and goods.
Well, support.
And departments, too. And departments. Okay, so, motion has made by Treasure Brown, and second by our clerk, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will follow up in the next meeting with this thing, I don't know how we're going to work with it. Good point, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you to the folks that helped us get there.
Dave's ready for a new shirt.
Kick the top off that bell.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to get approval to finish off the fabrication of the Sprinter that I got approval to buy last year. But if I could catch up trustee Tedder, because I know he wasn't a part of that, just a quick summary of what we're doing at the fire department, is we decided to go with a vision of getting a command vehicle, new command vehicle, which is a Sprinter van, and then we're going to outfit or fabricate the inside of it to be more of a mobile office, so that when the shift commander arrives on scene of a major incident, a fire, those sort of things, a PIX on I-75, he can operate in the inside of this van back in an office setting, look out the windows, and run the scene, be it a fire scene or whatever scene it might be, in a quiet, office-like setting, hear his radio, be able to give direction. So we purchased the van last June, the Sprinter van, and then we now need to go, take it out to fabrication to do the inside, to build that office part out. All the funds for this is our ARPA funds that we got approved for a couple of years ago. So this is just moving forward with the project. The company that we'd like to use is Kentucky Trailer out of Wicksum. Kind of a real quick story about them. They do major, all like the governmental work for the army, for the federal government, and they build these command centers out of semi-trailers. So during our project is more of a small project for them, but well within their scope of being able to do. So we'd like to use them, so that's what I'm recommending, that we go with Kentucky Trailer as the vendor. They also offer the GSA purchasing, so they'll, whatever they've given to the government for pricing is passed on to us, so we'll get the, the benefit of that. We had kind of set aside out of that ARPA funds, we had like 178,000, and we're going to use 160, that's what the cost of the project is. However, we're looking to add an additional 10,000 in case something pops up during the build process that we need to adjust, add to, so we're, I'm looking to get approval for 170,000, so 10,000 will be contingency. Once a truck is here, goes into service, and again, it runs out of Fire Station One on Citation Drive, and the shift commander works out of that vehicle and essentially runs the township, runs all the fire crews out of that van. So it's a very important piece of equipment we've been working on for over a year. It'll serve some kind of like an all-purpose emergency vehicle. Some other little items that'll do for the community is, and I had spoke to this before when I got approval for the van, is, so when we go on a lot of these structure fires, especially in the middle of the night, if there's a family at that house, they end up outside standing there, maybe with whatever they got out of the house with, pajamas, t-shirt, whatever. So now we'll be able to put them in this van also to kind of sequester them during that event, so it's another big piece. Doing large runs with the police department, we can do a unified command and bring the police department into our command vehicle and collaborate with them on how to handle a particular incident. So it serves multi-functions all over the place, so it's very important that we move forward. So with that, I guess I'd open up to questions.
Any questions from board members?
Just one comment. To me, I guess, chief, you could probably expand upon what you were saying, the use of the command vehicle would be, I know we had the fire on Dixie Highway at the apartment buildings, and, you know, we had people come from other entities around to help us put out that fire, so. So part of it, you can expand on this, I guess, to say how inner, the inner government, you know, coordination might happen out of that as well.
Yeah, that's actually a, a great example. So that fire that happened on that day, we brought in seven or eight different fire departments came in, and typically when the fire departments are called in for mutual aid, you'll see their commanding officers like chiefs, assistant chiefs will also come and assist, and at that level, they assist us with command. So that day, we were all standing outside, you know, talking, when we really should have been in a vehicle quietly talking, strategizing, so it will also help in those situations where we're calling for mutual aid on structures and then having one command staff in a vehicle working out of it, so.
Like I said, we talked about that story before, I just, to me, that was a, would have been a perfect example of, of the time we could have used that.
Yeah, absolutely. If you can imagine, too, that day was the middle of summer, so the weather was fine in terms of that, but currently what our commanders are doing, these shift commanders are going on scene, if it could be a snowstorm, it could be a rainstorm, and they're standing outside in the elements with a radio, trying to manage the scene. That's not great conditions to do that in, so obviously for all the safety reasons, to put them in a quiet environment where they can actually hear their radio, they can scribe and write down what's going on in that run and pay attention to where their crews are at, and have accountability, that's the key piece here, so.
They have large screens inside the, the van as well, like if you're looking at maps or diagrams or whatever, people can see that better than...
Yep, we're going to have the technology in there, we're going to have screens in there, we're going to also be, they're going to be technology where we can see where the firemen are in the fire, up on the screen, so the commander can kind of pay attention to where they're at in the structure while he's also running the structure, so.
Any other questions?
I just think it's great, Dave, that, chief, that you're bringing us up to a higher standard with your expertise coming here, using ARPA funds and not taxpayer dollars to advance independence into the future, especially with that apartment fire, that was a big deal. So I'm, I'm always in support of better technology and stuff for the firefighters.
Thank you.
I agree with you, of course. That's very important, you know, to keep our infrastructure and technology. Yeah, but I think it's going to be a good thing. Is anyone else, no? Anyone in the public? Okay, I need, I need a motion.
I move to accept the quote received from Trader Technologies Holdings LLC, DBA Kentucky Trailer, located at 48282 Frank Street, Wicksum, Michigan, and 48393 zip code, and through the General Services Administration contract, GS30F0001Y, as permitted under Section 3 Standards for Procurement, Articles 1.6 and 3.1 of the Township's Procurement Policy for the purchase of the customization of the mobile command vehicle in the amount not to exceed $170,000, 70, $170,073.86, and authorize the supervisor to sign the quote as the authorized representative of the township.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion B?
I'll move to approve the General Services Administration contracts in place of the Township bidding process, procurement procedure, Section 1.6, cooperative and extended purchasing.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, everybody, for that support, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our DPW director, Dave McKee. Good evening, Dave.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So it's that time of year today, so today, we're, the first thing on, on my list here is the renewal of the NOHAS, or approval of NOHAS, the 2024 NOHAS program for Independence Township. We've been a part of this since I've been here, went on 10 years now, and it's a great program. It's collaboration with other communities to get hazardous waste and materials out of landfill, or not so much out of landfills, but, you know, in the proper way of disposing that. You know, in the proper way of disposing them. Independence Townships, we were the number two participant of all the communities in twenty twenty-three. There was twelve last year, so Independence Township residents showed up. And as you see in the, in the board packet, there was over eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred pounds of material. From electronics, paint, waste, oil. Independence Township residents got into this program, they could have ended up somewhere else. They did, they brought it, so they really participate in this. So this year, we're just going to do the renewal, so we can participate in it again. No real changes to the cost to the residents, it's still fifteen dollars per carload. And the only, the only bummer about the whole thing is we're not gonna have an event here in Independence this year. Last year, we had it at Pine Knob, Oakland County is one that manages it, they just couldn't get things going scheduling-wise. Pine Knob has a very, very aggressive concert schedule, so it just didn't work out, they have to put it together pretty good. And with the amount of participation that we have, there's thousands of cars that show up, we have DPW staff attend every event and work it. And you need a big space, ideally the Pine Knob Music Theater in their parking lot is, is perfect. Don't really have anything of that, that size. But Pine Knob's been great, they're saying, hey, get with us next year and we'll try to have an event here. They haven't released the schedule of where the events will be in twenty twenty-four yet, I'll just check in on the county website. And they have not done that yet, they anticipate late February is when we'll have it. But either way, past couple of years, with the exception of last year, we haven't had any events here, township residents show up. Orion will have one, I'm sure, and Waterford will have, might have one, so. It's a great program and we're here tonight to have it re-approved through the resolution and motion to participate in the twenty twenty-four NOHAS.
Okay, any questions from board members?
Just a quick one, Dave, is there anywhere other, what can people dispose of here in the township and where?
So.
On any given day?
On any given day or in these events?
At any other event, any other time than this? Is there anywhere else in the township to drop off recycling, this type of product, oil?
I'm not aware of oil, some of your.
But not through us?
Not through us.
Okay.
This is the only program that we are affiliated with. If you need to get rid of oil, specifically motor oil, some of the quick oil changes places will take it, some, you know, some auto parts stores might. But not on the scale that this program will take here. And that's, you know, electronic waste is the number one thing. TVs, old TVs, computers, that is the number one out of all communities, that's what people get rid of. These are disposable, you don't fix TVs anymore, phones and everything, you just pitch it. They recycle them and take care of them.
Anyone else, trustee Ritchie?
Yeah, I guess, you know, we've been doing this for a number of years now, like you said, and so the residents, I think every year they, they collect their stuff through the year and they've, that's why we've been good participants at this event. They, they save their stuff and they bring it. And, you know, I think it's, it's a great thing because like you say, it's better than people dumping it in the ditch or some other place that's gonna go under water.
Absolutely.
Areas and all that type of stuff, so.
We use it, the township. We store gondola boxes full of old stuff that, when we have the event, we participate, so we take. It's better than throwing it in the dumpster because it's just gonna end up in a landfill and a lot of the stuff gets recycled. It's a great program, it's, it's really good. And more communities are joining and, and our board packet, it says there's twelve communities, there's fourteen in it now. So communities can come in and out through years, so I was just checking on their website, it looks like City Rochester's in now and so is Village of Oxford, so. And that helps with our costs, so our cost, the more communities that participate, the overall cost is spread out. The pain is spread out, as they say, and it'll cost us a little bit less, so.
Trustee Alamato?
Would the high school be big enough to host it?
So. We talked about them, I've been in contact with Oakland County about that, and I think, I think it's the way the parking lot, it would be the high school, it'd probably be the best choice because they have the biggest parking lot. I think it's the part, the configuration is not ideal. Because if you haven't participated in it before, you put the things in your car and you just drive up, you don't get out of your car. You just pop your lid, or pop your hood, or your trunket, or just pull up in your pickup truck and they're, what do you have, an oil, and they take it out and they said. You know, move to the next station and their staff there, they just take it all out, you don't even get out of your car. So it's a machine that goes through there and it's pretty, pretty efficient, but you need a lot of flat space. I think years ago, they had it at DPW one year and even with the participation was fairly new, I think it was not quite as efficient as it could have been. Because there's just not enough room over there, you need a lot of flat space over there. Lots of cars.
Okay. Great, anyone else? Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Okay, I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the North Oakland County Household Hazardous Waste Interlocal Agreement. And Resolution Number twenty twenty-four dash zero zero two between Oakland County and the Charter Township of Independence. For January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four is presented and authorized the township supervisor to execute the same.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Next.
Great program.
Dave?
So my next item, I believe it's for the, approve the twenty twenty-four CCTV sewer preventive maintenance services. So for those board members who weren't here, in two thousand seventeen, we had a program was launched by the state called the Saw Grant, or Saw Grant. Saw Grant, I can't remember the acronym, but essentially what it does is every municipality, public utility in Michigan. Was required to do an asset management plan for their sewer system. If they have public sewers, we had to inspect them all and document all the faults that were in there and fix them. Now, you could only do sewers that were built from nineteen ninety-six and older. So Independence Township applied and we received two million dollars in grants to do that. Independence Township is considered a fairly newer system in the world of public works. But that doesn't mean we don't have problems. So they did have problems, each section of pipe throughout the township was categorized as the probability of failure, it was given a grade. Essentially a grade from one being brand-new to five being it's garbage, it's about to collapse, and probability of failure was put on that. So we had to identify all these pipes. So in the spirit with that, and I'm kind of, kind of getting ahead of myself a little bit on here. But this program that we do, the CCTV, this is inspection services only. We are inspecting all of our pipes throughout the township. And in the spirit of the Saw Grant, we are doing the same, same way that we did it through the Saw Grant. It's consistency and we're required to do it. We need to keep inspecting, it's kind of like painting the Mackinac Bridge, okay? You start and it takes you years to finish it, and when you're done, drive to the other end and start over. It's a constant monitoring to make sure that your assets are in good shape and you make the repairs as needed. This is for the CCTV portion, which is televising them, there's a camera truck that goes down, they inspect the sewer pipe, they videotape every section, they give us a full report. We keep it and we got data on what we, what we find. If we find repairs that need immediate repairs, we'll jump on it right away, that'll be the next board item that acts after this one. But we could categorize and find out where we need to make our repairs and it helps us budget our money, asset management. So the contract that you have, or the proposal that we have in front of you now, excuse me. This is with pipeline management, to approve pipeline management, they are the vendor that did the original Saw Grant, they have a competitive contract with Oakland County. It's good till twenty twenty-five, they have extended the pricing to us. So, and they have been our vendor doing this for us for the past five, six years now at least. And we budget for this every year as a preventative maintenance program and we're here to get the blanket PO approved. To get the CCTV portion of our asset management plan for the sewer systems approved.
Okay, any other questions? Questions from board members? No? No? Okay, I would like, any question from the public? Okay, I would like a motion.
I move to approve the sewer preventive maintenance services available through Oakland County's Cooperative Purchasing Program Contract. Awarded to Pipeline Management Company, Inc. of Milford, Michigan. Award number zero zero five nine five two. For professional services associated with the CCTV inspections of the township-owned sewer mains as identified by the Department of Public Works. Sanitary sewer preventive maintenance program. And approve the following twenty twenty-four blanket order PO. For a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for payment of these services.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you. Part two.
Part two.
Once you CCTV the pipe, and if you do find something, you need to repair it. Now, this is for repairs of pipe that we discovered were failed or, or had cracks or something in them. That was discovered for, during the Saw Grant, okay, so I kind of brought that up back in seventeen. So as you noticed in, in the board packet, there's, there's not a lot of streets, a lot of money to be, do these repairs, but these are full-length liners. So they were categorized of fours and threes, pipes four and three, five was being the worst, four is not the greatest, and three is you need to do something soon. So we're moving down and we're cleaning up all those pipe, sewer pipe that was identified during the Saw Grant that needed repair. Not just inspection, the inspection was done, now they need repair. We've been really aggressive on this the past few years since we, I received direction from administration to be very aggressive to get this done. Get these pipes fixed as soon as possible, and we've done a great job. Again, pipeline management has a cooperative purchasing agreement signed with Oakland County for repairs as well, they do, and they do all Oakland County stuff too. So we were put together the package, we're whittling it down for repairs, there's not a lot, as you can see on the board packet there, but. These are full-length liners, so imagine a two-hundred or five-hundred foot piece of sewer pipe. Ten inches on diameter, they, they line it with a sock, it looks like a sock, it's like a resin sock. I've showed some board videos of it before, it's pretty cool, it's pretty cool how it does it, it's kind of like an inverted sock that just goes through the whole thing and then they inflate it and. It's full of resin and it hardens up with UV light and it's has structural integrity and it lasts fifty years. It's great, you don't have to dig up the roads, you don't have to dig up anything. There's a price to it, it's expensive, but it's a lot cheaper than digging up roads, replacing pipe, especially if you got something going underneath I seventy-five or M fifteen or Dixie Highway. So we're identifying that, so tonight I'm looking to get the blanket PO for twenty twenty-four repairs for pipes that, that need repair that were identified through the Saw Grant.
Okay, any comments, any questions, trustee Ritchie?
I'll make a comment as far as, you know, one of the things we found over the years is there, there's cracks or breaks in the sewer system. And it basically is letting in surface water into the sewer system. And, and basically one of the ways to keep costs down in our sewer, sewer costs is, because we get charged by each gallon that goes to the Detroit sewer system.
That is correct.
So if water's leaking in from surface water or even river or lake or whatever.
That's correct.
Which could be many gallons of water going in there over time, if we can, we can stop that, it saves us money in the long run too.
Absolutely right, Paul, at one hundred percent, we talked about that in the past, you know, we could build for sewage disposal by flow. We don't mind paying for the sewage we have that we create, but when groundwater just pours in, and we found a couple of gushers and we jumped on them, right, but you know, they could have been. It's amazing, it's like, oh my gosh, you know, there's a lot of water going there, hundred gallons a minute.
Okay, anyone?
That's why we CCTV, to inspect and find them and then, then we go and fix them.
Okay, anyone for the public? Sure, Mark?
Mr. Aliaga, I was just wondering, when we do do those repairs out there on those sewers and everything like that, I don't care about that.
No, but.
When we do those sewer repairs.
Say your name, I just.
How, after, when they're done, do, what kind of a return or resolve do we see as far as the REUs? Especially the, the sewage?
Well, REUs are kind of a different, REUs are based on type of building or something that you use. REUs are flow-based for the sewage that goes to the county for treatment.
Mark, state your name and address, she needs.
Oh, Mark Patterson, Almond Lane.
The address?
RE. Well, to answer the question.
Do we see it in real time?
Yeah, Mark, 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 you have to come to the podium and state your name, address, and then please, okay. Alright, we're good, alright. Anyone from online?
One quick clerical question, Dave, is the award number supposed to be the same for both items?
I'm sorry.
Is the award?
The contract number?
The award number the same on last agenda item and this agenda item, they're part of the same package, right?
It is, the whole contract with the county and that's, I kind of put it in there because they changed the numbers, they changed their software and the contract's got different numbers, so.
I just want to make sure they were supposed to be the same.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other motion?
I move to approve Pipeline Management Company, Inc. of Milford, Michigan. Award number zero zero five nine five two. For professional services associated with the repair of sewer mains as identified by the Independence Township Saw Grant. And for any unforeseen repairs as identified by the Department of Public Works. And approve a twenty twenty-four blanket order PO. For a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for payment of these services.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, lastly. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, I got a letter of resign from Tim Lockery. Tim was a longtime member of the Planning Commission, I actually reappointed him, he was one of my first reappointments, only reappointment for the Planning Commission. He served really well, I called him, I talked to him, I thanked him for his service, dedication, you know. Planning Commission is a, is a voluntary work and he did a good job and certainly we're gonna miss him. So since I already, for the last few weeks, I reached also the same group of people that are applying for the Planning Commission. I, I already interviewed a big group that already applied and those applications, as trustee Ritchie mentioned before, are open, are good for many months, it's not just for a few weeks. I'm bringing our recommendation tonight of Belinda Billings, Belinda has some experience in CBA. Besides that, she knows rubber rules and she's very involved in the community, she's very involved in her own homeowners association. And then as we hear from many people that came of many, couple minutes ago. People would like to see new blood in the PC as well, new ideas, and it was a lot of criticism for the last couple of years about the quality of the housing development in our township. And then I believe that Belinda will meet the requirements that most of the people in our community are looking for, and I trust in Belinda we do a good job. And I bring in tonight the recommendation for the board and I expect to you guys to support me. And that I will open the floor for the, for the board of trustees. Anyone have any questions or? No? Anyone from the public? If you would like to, please, Belinda, if you'd like to say a few words, that would be good.
Good evening, my name is Belinda Billings, six oh two five Cedar Bend Drive, Clarkston, Michigan. Thank you Supervisor Aliaga and trustee board for the opportunity, opportunity to come before you this evening for the open seat on the Planning Commission. I'm married, I'm a grandmother, my husband and I have lived in the same house for about ten years. We are members and active attenders at Clarkston Community Church. I was in the same spot about three months ago when I applied for the vacant trustee seat. And by the way, trustee Teter, no hard feelings, I would have voted for you too. Anyway, I hope you remember me when I was up here three months ago. I had a lot of my friends and neighbors that came to speak on my behalf and even wrote a couple of letters of recommendations, so. I didn't want to bring them out again tonight because I respect their time. But briefly, I'm a longtime real estate broker. I'm passionate about trees, landscape buffers, and screening that promote a positive image in harmony with the existing properties. I worked for corporate real estate at American Airlines for thirteen years. I've been an HOA vice president of my current subdivision for seven and a half years. If I were to be approved for the Planning Commission, I would just say that I will conduct myself in a professional manner. While being respectful of different ideas and opinions. And I look forward to interacting and collaborating with the board in an effort to provide Independence Township with the best possible developments going forward. to provide Independence Township with the best possible developments going forward in order to safeguard and enhance property values while protecting, uh, public and private investments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anyone from the public would like to speak, any questions, comments? Anyone online? All right, I guess I will request a pro, a roll call. Yeah, roll call.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay. Yeah, okay, you would like to make a motion? Okay, make a motion. Yeah, I, I open the, the one, yeah.
I'd like to move to appoint Belinda Billings as recommended by the Township Supervisor of the Planning Commission to fill Tim Logren's remaining term due to expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. Okay. Okay.
Ready for roll call?
Yeah, ready for roll call.
Clerk Newbeck, yes. Treasure Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Ritchie?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor Aliaga?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Okay, we're gonna have a closed session tonight, Communications, Future Agenda Idols, meetings, Video Center Administrative Board, September twenty-twenty-three, Communications, twenty-twenty-four, Video Center Administrative Board, meetings scheduled. Board member comments? I just wanna thank all the board members for tonight, it was a very good, productive meeting, very positive for our community, and again, I, I believe in my heart, while we agree or disagree sometimes, we are building a better tomorrow for our township, for our community. Thank you, guys. Okay, any other motion to your?
Move your hands. Support.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Good job.
Good job, Karen.